Okay, I'm calling the Newington Town Council meeting of March 28, 2017 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tanya, looks like you would take the roll again, please.
(inaudible). Councilor Anist?
Here.
Councilor Boudreco?
Here.
Councilor Delbuno?
Here.
Councilor Klett?
Here.
Councilor Manke?
Here.
Councilor Marakini?
Here.
Councilor Nagel?
Here.
Councilor Sarah?
Here.
Mayor's Artarian?
Here.
Next item, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Delbuno, second by Councilor Anist. Any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved unanimously. Next item is public participation. Please come forward, state your name and address. As I was reminded myself last week, please speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you. Limit your remarks to three minutes. And if you're watching on NCTV, the number is 860-665-8736.
Rose Lyons, 46 Elton Drive. Once again, my new favorite project is the capital improvements budget. I see that there's recommended transfers from capital projects to other projects proposed before you tonight. I'm just asking for clarification whether the projects to be financed are projects that were put in as a request from the department heads for this year. And it has been decided upon that instead of funding them through this year's capital improvements project budget, that you're going to use monies left over from other projects to fund these that have been requested. It's just, as I said last night, or last week, it's very befuddling to me how this capital improvement projects' rules seem to change, and not this year, but I'm hoping that next year, there'll be some kind of written guidelines as to what can and cannot be done, because I've sat through at least seven years of capital improvement projects requests. I've seen them reduced, I've seen them increased, I've seen them changed at the final minute by the town council, but this is the first time I've ever seen this happen. And maybe it's happened in the past, but not put on the agenda the way it has, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Amy Alexander, 16 Brentwood Road. I'm going to make this short because I have to get my child who has ants in his pants out of this room very quickly.[227.12][227.12](laughing) But I do, I wanted to say that as you go forward tonight with the rest of the agenda, that you seriously consider requests made by the Board of Education to fund the Board of Education programs this year. I have two children in the school system, and I support the Board of Education and the school program full-heartedly. And I think to make any more cuts in the programs that we already have is really going to take away from the growth of our children and the programs as we go forward. So I really would like all of you to consider funding the budget actually even higher than is going to be presented, but it is really important that I speak out and hopefully all of you listen so that you know how important it is for the families and the people in Newington that we fund the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Great. All right. Neil Ryan, 237 Brockett Street, Newington. Just for the record, I'm a member of the Board of Trustees for the Lewis Robinsons Library, however, tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of myself. There's an old saying in business that says, "You need to spend money in order to make money." And I look at municipal government in a similar manner. Town needs to spend money on itself in order to make itself a more vibrant, thriving, active community, a community that people want to visit, spend time in, shop, dine in, and ideally buy a house in. Towards that end, Newington needs a robust and active Parks and Rec Department with new facilities and a multitude of programs. It also needs an expanded library with Sunday hours. And Newington really needs to maintain and expand its public school system, which has always been, well, respected. Unfortunately, from looking at this year's budget, it looks as if the budget is flat. I know the argument is that this will keep property taxes lower, and maybe some truth in that. Well, personally, if my property taxes need to be increased in order to fully fund the library, Park and Rec Department, and the public school system, then increase my property taxes. I have no problem with that. I would consider it invested, my town, and money well spent. Finally, young families looking for a town to buy a house in, would more likely to look for a town with an outstanding school system, library, and park and rec department. And if Newington doesn't continue to fully fund these three institutions, my fear is that we could be losing families to other towns who may have more vision than we do. Thank you for your time, and we need to do this again sometime.
Anyone else? No one in the public, no phone calls. We move on to remarks by councilors on public participation. Comments? Next item. Old Business: Set the tentative budget for fiscal year 2017-2018. Councilor Anist, would you like to begin?
Sure. The Democrats met, and...
Into the microphone, too, please.
I'm sorry, I thought it was... This'll be easier.
Hey, great.
The Democrats met, and these are our proposed adjustments. To account 14000-8601, increase Board of Education to superintendent's proposed budget of 2.49% for $346,353. Do we need just a second? What, how are we? I think, are we going to do these line by line? Probably. Okay.
I didn't know if you wanted to do an overall explanation and then vote?
Yeah.
Because some offset the others and...
Yeah, we just need the second first, right?
Second? Keep going.
Can we ask a question?
I think we should vote on them.
I think we need to vote individually. I agree.
You vote each one?
We always do. Yeah.
But don't we want to read them all because some make... Some negate the others. Changes to other ones, so maybe we should read them and then vote on them one by one.
Do you want me to read them all, and then we'll go back and vote on them?
Give an explanation of what we're doing. Right. Yeah. Why don't we do that?
Okay.
That would make sense, I believe.
We'll go back one by one and vote.
Okay. To account number 10-270-8204, add EMS conferences, meetings, and trainings for awards banquet of $1,000. 10-610, account number 8217, increase human services consultants and special contractors by $5,000. Account 10-644-8402, add senior and disabled technical equipment, cut from the 2016-17 budget of $4,900. Account 11-100-8501, reduce transfer to capital non-recurring for school bus program, reducing it by $364,376. If you take the school buses that we're reducing and include the increases of the Board of Ed budget in the EMS conferences, the human services, and the senior and disabled, that gives us a net decrease of $7,123. Then we're proposing, in account number 10-328-8102, reduce leaf collection overtime by $20,000. And then in 10-324-8306, increase snow ice construction and maintenance materials by $20,000. Basically, doing that, it's a wash, and that reflects trend. If you go back previous years, there's always been a transfer from overtime for leaf to snow and ice. So what we want to do is just do it to reflect trend. So it's done at the council level rather than administratively.
Okay, thank you. Now let's act on each of these. The first one is increase the Board of Education to superintendent's proposed budget of 2.49%. Care to discuss that a little?
May I request a roll call vote on all these?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Yes, they are going to be roll called. Jamie's all set with lots of tally sheets.
Trying, okay.
Let her get situated. You situated?
I'm situated. Thank you.
In discussions, we felt that the Board of Ed could use the extra 2.49% to keep what the superintendent requested. It is a lean budget on their behalf, but by reducing the buses, they did purchase, I believe it was 11 buses last year, that we're allowing them to purchase two buses, therefore, kind of giving it a wash. So they're technically still getting the same amount, if you look at it in the whole ball of wax, but we're just reallocating it differently to them.
Any other comment on this? Roll call vote on the item, please, Jamie.
Councilor Anist?
Yes.
Councilor Boudreco?
No.
Councilor Delbuno?
No.
Councilor Klett?
Yes.
Councilor Manke?
No.
Councilor Marakini?
Yes.
Councilor Nagel?
No.
Councilor Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor's Artarian?
No. This one fails, 5-4. Next item. Add EMS conferences, meetings, and training for the award banquet, the amount of $1,000.
The reason we're doing this is it was brought to our attention this year that the fire department gets $2,000 for their awards banquet, and EMS pays for all their awards out of their own pocket. We asked them, and their average cost of awards is about $1,500. So we thought by giving them $1,000 to offset their awards, that it would help them out. Plus, each of the members have to pay for their own dinner, so hopefully, it would help them a little bit at their end of the budget. So that was one of the reasons why we decided to do that.
They are, they bill for their services, though.
I understand they do, but we also, you know, I understand, but they're still a part of our community, and they're still honored by us for their services.
Councilor Delbuno?
I'm glad you pointed that out, that they do bill for their services, but I, in listening to the explanation, I understand in terms of being a valid, very important, integral part of the community and, you know, really providing a service, I think $1,000 isn't necessarily too much for us to consider spending for, you know, in terms of an equitable issue too between the two departments. I don't have a problem with that.
No. Good cause. Any other comment? Okay, you take the roll.
Councilor Anist?
Yes.
Councilor Boudreco?
Yes.
Councilor Delbuno?
Yes.
Councilor Klett?
Yes.
Councilor Manke?
Yes.
Councilor Marakini?
Yes.
Councilor Nagel?
Yes.
Councilor Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor's Artarian?
Yes. Passes 9-0. Next item, increase human services consultants and special contractors.
I'm going to defer this to Councilor Sarah. This was her request that the three of us agreed upon.
I requested that this be put back in. We've taken out $10,000 last year out of their budget. More people are starting to use human services. They really could use special contractors to help with special needs, so I'd like to put $5,000 back into their budget.
Comments? Councilor Manke, then Councilor Delbuno.
Do we know what those special contractors do? Are they social workers, or psychologists, or what's theirs?
There are all kinds of different councilors, social workers. There. I can tell you, because I brought this up last year, and it failed, I think, 5-4. Therefore, specialists...
Councilor Delbuno's next, and Councilor Klett.
I don't mind yielding the floor, go right ahead.
Go ahead.[913.23][913.23](laughing)
No, you go.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that I remember when they came to make their presentation, they indicated that they were fine with what they had requested and didn't need any additional services. They felt like they were meeting the needs, given the budget that they proposed to the town manager. So I don't know that I would support this at this point, just because of the discussion we had at the table.
Okay. So last year, in fact, if there was anything that could be added, this is what they were looking for, and the reason, the rationale behind it was that this is for the specialists that they, you wouldn't normally have on staff for the special needs of an individual, child, adult, that we couldn't afford to keep somebody staffed, that they could reach out to an expert when someone had an unusual situation. That, and so, I mean, it's not uncommon for everybody to come, especially when you're being told that a budget has to be a certain amount, to say, you know, we're fine, but I know that this was an area of concern last year, so I definitely will support you on this, Diana.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Get the roll call vote, please.
Councilor Anist?
Yes.
Councilor Boudreco?
No.
Councilor Delbuno?
No.
Councilor Klett?
Yes.
Councilor Manke?
No.
Councilor Marakini?
Yes.
Councilor Nagel?
No.
Councilor Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor's Artarian?
No. And that fails 5-4. Next item, add senior and disabled technical equipment, call, cut from the 2016-17 budget.
This is a piece of equipment that is on its last leg. They requested it last year. It was cut from their budget last year. Our hopes is to replace it this year for them, because as the equipment starts getting older, where they're going to start needing to replace it, and I would rather do it over a period of time than having all at once, having them come to us and say they need $20,000 or $30,000 to replace their equipment. You heard Diane Stone say how many people do use their gym on a daily basis, and how many people have taken their programs, and I think it's a necessity at this time to support our older residents with this request and with having them have the right equipment for them to keep in shape.
Why were you looking at me when you said older residents?[1079.58][1079.58](laughing)
Hey, I'm a member of the senior center now, so, you know.
Ah, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll tell you what my concern is with this, and that is, I think they have a bit of a cushion in terms of gifts and requests and their contributions. I'm still not sure why this can't be covered out of that. Is there any other comment, Councilor Delbuno?
Just similar to what I said earlier. I know when Diane came before, she did say that, you know, that this was something that they had in the past in their budget, that at this point, the equipment was okay, they could live without it, given that we're trying to, really expecting each department to kind of, you know, do as little, as much as they can with as little as possible this year, given the decrease in revenue that we're seeing. So, given that she made that statement at our table and seemed comfortable with it, I don't see a need for this at this point.
Councilor Boudreco, then Councilor Nagel.
And I do recall, I think when Parks and Rec came regarding that sedex, what grant?
Saputo.
Saputo. Saputo grant. I talked to him about it, and he said he anticipated the opening up and having some classes for the seniors and whatever, and opening up all that equipment to them as well, and he really felt that the seniors would be utilizing that in addition to what they're doing inside. He, so...
Okay. Councilor Nagel?
I just wanted to reinforce your statement that they do have a fund that is accrued, it's not from tax dollars, that has been used for various things, whether it could be used for equipment, obviously, is up to them. And there are many other pieces of equipment there that can be used, and I'm sure if it was definitely on its last legs at meetings that the Senior and Disabled Commission had, that they, it would have been brought up continually. It has been mentioned, but it's not at the point where it's, as I see it, is a make-or-break need that will very negatively affect the program they have ongoing, which also includes trainers that come in, which is to the benefit of seniors as well.
Any other comment on this? Roll call, please, Jamie.
Councilor Anist?
Yes.
Councilor Boudreco?
No.
Councilor Delbuno?
No.
Councilor Klett?
Yes.
Councilor Manke?
No.
Councilor Marakini?
Yes.
Councilor Nagel?
No.
Councilor Sarah?
Yes.
Or Mayor's Artarian?
That fails 5-4. Next item is reduce transfer to capital non-recurring for the school bus program.
As I stated earlier, we're going to reduce the school bus program for the, just to the purchase of two buses, which would leave a balance, a net decrease of $364,376. By doing this, it would offset the increase that we proposed of 2.49% to the superintendent's The Board, I believe, purchased 11 buses last year, and we're hoping with 11 buses and the two that they're getting this year, we'll keep them on track.
Any other council comment? Councilor Delbuno?
I'll say we're of like mind on this item. We did have a proposal in ours that is listed as number one on our sheet later on. The amount is a little bit different, but not significantly, so I would go ahead and support this motion.
Anyone else? If not, can we get the roll call, please, Jamie?
Councilor Anist?
Yes.
Councilor Boudreco?
Yes.
Councilor Delbuno?
Yes.
Councilor Klett?
Yes.
Councilor Manke?
Yes.
Councilor Marakini?
Yes.
Councilor Nagel?
Yes.
Councilor Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor's Artarian?
Yes. Getting 9-0 on that. Next item, reducing leaf collection overtime.
As I stated earlier, the reason we're doing this is just to reflect trend between the leaf collection overtime and the increase in the snow and ice maintenance materials. So we're looking to reduce the leaf collection by 20,000 and increase in the snow and ice by 20,000, so it'd be a wash. There's no difference in anything.
Council comment? Councilor Delbuno?
Just a quick question. I just want to make sure, I think we talked about this before, but you could just, if there was a need in one versus the other, and there's a transfer that could happen at the time between those two accounts, as we've done in the past.
Yeah, I just have...
I'm fine with this in terms of reflecting trend.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that if we're voting on a budget line by line, then we should have a say where the monies go, and we should have a say if the money gets transferred. So to take it off administratively and put it on us, I think it's a better way of doing it.
Okay, let's get the roll call, please, Jamie.
Councilor Anist?
Yes.
Councilor Boudreco?
Yes.
Councilor Delbuno?
Yes.
Councilor Klett?
Yes.
Councilor Manke?
Yes.
Councilor Marakini?
Yes.
Councilor Nagel?
Yes.
Councilor Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor's Artarian?
Yes. That's accepted at 9-0. And upon that, too, we have the next item of increasing the snow ice construction maintenance materials, which is a wash.
Right.
So let's do the roll call, unless anyone has any comment on it. No comment, let's go.
Councilor Anist?
Yes.
Councilor Boudreco?
Yes.
Councilor Delbuno?
Yes.
Councilor Klett?
Yes.
Councilor Manke?
Yes.
Councilor Marakini?
Yes.
Councilor Nagel?
Yes.
Councilor Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor's Artarian?
Yes. Again, that passes 9-0. Okay, thank you. Councilor Delbuno, you're up at that.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, line item one, we will be skipping. We just voted on the bus reserve account along with Councilor Anist and her proposal, so we will scratch number one. Moving on to number two, do you want me, you want me to read them all like we did before? So I'll start with number two. Account 11100-8501, decrease transfer to capital non-recurring for snow removal roadside mowing equipment of $175,000.
Let's go through them all.
14000, account 8601, decrease Board of Education budget to 0.3% increase, $1.2 million. 10154, account 8103, decrease revenue collector part-time, $13,282. 10180, account number 8204, decrease personnel by $1,000. Yes. I'm sorry, I'm just losing my spot. Account, item 10197, account 8204, decrease information technology conferences, meetings, trainings by $500. 10197, account 8302, decrease information technology, technical supplies by $500. 10832, account 8220, decrease parks and grounds and cemeteries disposal of soil by $3,000. 10151, account 7012, transfer from cemetery fund to reflect adjustment to account 10832 of $3,000. 10151, account 6013, increase telecommunications tax, $35,000. 10810, account 8103, reduce parks and recreations part-time, use SRF Recreation Enterprise Fund, $11,500. 11100, account 8501, additional prior year PO closed to help offset CIP, $4,000, for a total decrease of $1,813,782.
Less $373,000. $373,000, I believe.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right, Mayor. I didn't subtract out the 373. Correct. So we'll start with number two.
Yes.
Decrease the transfer to the capital non-recurring for snow removal roadside mowing equipment. This was a request of the Parks and Rec Department in the CIP account for $175,000 for a piece of snow removal roadside mowing equipment. In looking at the budget, this was something that we thought perhaps could be put off and not be purchased this year in order to offset some of the revenue decreases that we're seeing.
I'm a big fan of snow removal equipment, but times are tough. Times are tough, and it appears to be an addition rather than a replacement, so... Any other council comment on this? Get the roll call vote, please, Jamie.
Councilor Anist?
No.
Councilor Boudreco?
Yes.
Councilor Delbuno?
Yes.
Councilor Klett?
Yes.
Councilor Manke?
Yes.
Councilor Marakini?
No.
Councilor Nagel?
Yes.
Councilor Sarah?
No.
Mayor's Artarian?
Yes. That passes, I'm getting 6-3 on that. Next item.
The next item is decrease Board of Education to 0.3% increase for the amount of $1.2 Easy one to discuss, but I will go into why we came to that figure. The town manager's budget came in at a recommended increase of 2.0%. We know that the Board of Education has a refund check for health benefits in excess of 1.2 million, and while we are trying to tighten our belts everywhere and all of our department sides as well, you know, we're looking for, just as I would do, I'm going to use an analogy, I guess, in my own home, if my revenue were decreased, so if my hours were decreased by part to part-time instead of full-time, and I needed to make up that difference, and I received a rebate check, like a income tax check, I would need to use that instead of a vacation or something that I wouldn't normally purchase, that wasn't in my normal operating, I would use that to help offset my expenses at the time and hope that in the future, I'd be able to use it for something different in another year. hope that in the future I'd be able to use it for something different in another year. But this year's so difficult, and with our anticipated decreases in revenue that we know about being approximately 2.5 million, I want to say, maybe 2.3, that we know of, and with the uncertainty facing us, we are hoping that the Board of Education will be able to help us with this decrease, knowing that they have the funding in a different place that they will be able to offset expenses with. We did set up a surplus account last year for the Board of Education that they're able to put in excess of 1% of their budget, no, no more than 1% of their budget, so that would be a round figure of 710,000 of that could go into the surplus fund to be used to offset expenses next year, and, you know, the remainder of it, I'm not sure what they would use it for. If there's any expenses they could use it for to offset for next year, that would be greatly appreciated.
Any other counsel comment? I just want to say that the situation we're facing is with the budget is not one so much of expenditures, it's one of revenues. Counselor W. No alluded to a situation with the state budget. We don't know where that's going to end up. They're still in session at the Capitol, and at this point with so much uncertainty, we have to look at every source of revenue we can basically get our hands on. If-
No, go ahead, I just want to add something when you're done.
Gesturing. Is there any other comment?
If I could just add one more thought?
Sure.
I just wanted to mention that last year, when we did set up the surplus account for the Board of Education, last budget, I'm sure members of the public remember that, we were told that they were facing with the budget that we proposed, 15 teacher layoffs, as well as many other cuts, and they were going to be using the $515,000 of surplus money to offset the budget. At this point, to my knowledge, the last I checked, that money had not been spent, and those 15 teachers were still employed, which is a wonderful thing, and that I'm thrilled that they were able to accomplish, but it does allow them to have an additional $500,000 in that account moving forward on top of this 1.2 that they received for the refund. So we're hopeful that we can work together on that.
Just to put that in perspective, the 15 layoffs, I was talking with the mayor of West Hartford earlier today, and she reminded me that they're looking at possibly 200 teacher layoffs, and this is West Hartford. Counselor Klett?
I think West Hartford also came in with a budget of an 8% increase, which makes a huge difference than what Newington has come in with. I believe that's what it was around, correct? Less 8%? So we're talking, we're not talking the same, you know, apples to apples here.
Counselor Marakini?
You know, obviously, I can't support such a thing, but my biggest fear is trying to use non-recurring money, albeit health benefits, extra money comes across seemingly every year, which should be dwindling as the high-cost deductibles move forward through staff, but it just scares me to try to use non-recurring funds for reoccurring budgets. I think it's a very bad idea. I thought it was a bad idea last year. It seemed to have worked out okay, yes, but the further and further along, you may feel comfortable doing these next to nothing budgets. I think the worse off it's going to be for the town of Newington, not better, but that's where I stand.
Any other comment? Roll call vote, please, Jamie.
Counselor Anist?
No.
Counselor Bedraco?
Yes.
Counselor W. No?
Yes.
Counselor Klett?
No.
Counselor Manke?
Yes.
Counselor Marakini?
No.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Counselor Sarah?
No.
Mayor Zartarian?
Yes. That is approved at five-four. Next item, decrease the revenue collector part-time. This is, we should note for a vacant position. Counselor W. No?
You said a little bit of it there, decreasing the revenue collector part-time. This was a, correct me if I'm wrong, Tan Yarian, it was a 19-hour position, correct? And we've been exploring with the town manager the opportunity to perhaps institute online payment of taxes. We're hoping to move forward with that shortly. That was that, Counselor Anist, I think you were the one that really initiated that. So in light of that, and in looking at the fact that it is a vacant position currently, we are looking to reduce by that position, and quite frankly, I'm hoping people notice that this is, we're really trying to look at both sides, and I know it's a lot, much bigger chunk on one versus the other, but we are trying to make efforts on both sides to make some improvements to the budget. So that's where that stands. The amount for that decrease is $13,282.
Can I just, and that's-
Counselor Marakini?
That's net, so you factor, we, I guess, because it's kind of bipartisan. Factored in the amount, what the cost for online payments is-
Correct.
Then-
Counselor Anist?
And does that factor in the look-up as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so just a net?
Yes.
With 3,000.
Yeah, the total package, maintenance, annual maintenance is 3,000 for both those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counsel comment? Jamie, if you would?
Counselor Anist?
Yes.
Counselor Bedraco?
Yes.
Counselor W. No?
Yes.
Counselor Klett?
No.
Counselor Manke?
Yes.
Counselor Marakini?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Counselor Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor Zartarian?
Yes. Looks like seven to two to approve that. Counselor Sarah, what was your vote?
Eight to one.
Eight to one. I'm sorry.
Am I letting you do the count?
Next item, decrease personnel.
I'm just looking at my notes before I speak, and correct me if I'm wrong, this was for conferences and training and consultant fees of $1,000. The next, this item and the next two items really were just an effort to look at last year versus this year, any increases that we saw that we might be able to use to offset the budget, so this $1,000 reflects that.
Any counsel comment? Counselor Anist?
How would that affect $1,000? Is that, that's, I know it's for conferences or for, it's for conferences, right?
No.
With departments.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up my numbers.
It's for everyone. It's what they don't have in their budget. It's a fund of about, I think, $6,000 that is set aside for everybody to apply for throughout the year, so you're decreasing that by $1,000.
But every department has their own line item.
Also.
Also, right?
Somewhat, yeah. Some of them are really low.
Do we generally go through the, what it's ever spent in the past annually or fiscally?
Yes, yes. Is there ever any surplus in that account?
There was $400 last year, and the year before that was negative.
Is it the same departments that request?
No, it's-
No monies?
It's, there are some, but then we try to kind of rotate it amongst different departments, and as different training comes up and different needs come up, I think it's kind of goes around.
Any other counsel comment, questions? Okay. On decrease personnel, Jamie, please.
Counselor Anist?
No.
Counselor Bedraco?
Yes.
Counselor W. No?
Yes.
Counselor Klett?
Yes.
Counselor Manke?
Yes.
Counselor Marakini?
No.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Counselor Sarah?
No.
Mayor Zartarian?
Yes. That is approved, six-three. Item, as well, take them together, the next two. Board Information Technology Conferences, Meetings and Trainings, Technical Supplies.
We can do that together if everyone's in agreement of that. I'm looking around the table for a shake of the heads or not, but-
Shaking their head.
Yes, no?
Six and seven, you're talking?
Yeah.
Yes, items six and seven are both decreasing information technology. One is for conference meetings and trainings. One is for technical supplies. Each item is $500.
Okay, so, and where we, where they decrease the personnel, oh, wait, forget it. I answered my own question, sorry.
Could you speak into the mic?
My own question.
It's the best kind.
Any comments?
So we're taking these together, correct, Mayor?
Oh, yeah, we'll do them together, Jamie.
Counselor Anist?
Yes.
Counselor Bedraco?
Yes.
Counselor W. No?
Yes.
Counselor Klett?
Yes.
Counselor Manke?
Yes.
Counselor Marakini?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Counselor Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor Zartarian?
Yes. Items six and seven are approved, nine-zero. Item eight, decrease-
Eight is decrease Parks and Grounds Cemeteries disposal of soil for $3,000. This was an item that was brought up at the last meeting, and I've, we've done some research, and there was a person from the public that was willing to take any soil that was generated from Parks and Grounds, and the superintendent of Parks was okay with this, so that's why we're proposing it.
Okay. Any comment, questions? Counselor Nagel?
Just a brief comment. That was, the individual would take it without charging, so that's why the 3,000 is no longer needed.
Correct.
Do we have, like, anything in writing from this person that they're not going to decide halfway through the year that they're not going to take the soil anymore?
I didn't negotiate a contract.
Not negotiate, but I mean, I'm just concerned if they decide that they don't want to take the soil, what's going to happen?
Yeah, we would have to figure that out, I suppose.
Would that have to be something? Would that have to be something?
We're going to be looking for a council member that needs soil. A side lot that needs some soil.
No.
No, I do, but-
I don't want to take the bones, no.
Remember, it's bony, remember.
Again, just looking for all options out there, and this was an opportunity that presented.
And that refunds the next one down, I-
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, go for it. Yes, this is the next item because of-
Ann, can you explain that next item, the transfer? You're going to be better at explaining how it works.
Okay. The way this budget works, the, within Parks and Grounds is the cemetery program. That's actually funded from the cemetery fund, so we transfer a revenue line item from the cemetery fund to offset the cemetery program, so it's a wash. So if I'm going to decrease an expenditure in the appropriation side of the budget, I have to do an offset to the revenue.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other counsel comment? Shall we vote on those two items together?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, Jamie, please.
Counselor Anist?
Yes.
Counselor Bedraco?
Yes.
Counselor W. No?
Yes.
Counselor Klett?
Yes.
Counselor Manke?
Yes.
Counselor Marakini?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Counselor Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor Zartarian?
Yes. Items eight and nine are approved, nine-zero. Next item looks like a good one. Item 10.
I'm going to have Ann help me with the next three. I worked in conjunction with her on these three. I had posed a question in reviewing items of revenue and anything else that we had projected early on, if there were any changes that could be projected, and these were things that were brought forward, so I will start with increased telecommunications tax by 35,000. Can you, should that be?
Yes. The latest I got on, this is the tax that we get from the telephone companies. So the new version I got just a couple weeks ago is that this year we'll be collecting about $118,000 in revenue, and we had budgeted 80,000 something, so we're able to increase that line item by 35,000.
Good.
Thank you for that.
Any counsel comment or question? Jamie, please.
Counselor Anist?
Yes.
Counselor Bedraco?
Yes.
Counselor W. No?
Yes.
Counselor Klett?
Yes.
Counselor Manke?
Yes.
Counselor Marakini?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Counselor Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor Zartarian?
Oh, absolutely, yes. Okay, nine-zero. Next item, reduce Parks and Rec part-time by moving the cost to the special revenue fund.
Correct. So in looking at the special revenue fund for Parks and Recreation, there is a balance in there. However, from what I understand, the special revenue fund is used for very specific reasons and purposes, so there is, in asking the town manager to review these items, there was an opportunity to put $11,500 into the enterprise fund instead of the Parks and Recreation part-time budget.
Any questions on that? Counselor Anist?
So that this position that you're looking, to transfer the money, can be paid out of the enterprise fund?
Look over there.
Yes, there's lots of personnel being charged to the recreation, all the programmers, and this, this person is actually using a lot with RecTrack, which is, you know, that runs a lot of those programs and keeps track of it, so we think it's an appropriate expense for running the recreation programs.
Thank you for that, Ann.
Any other comments or questions on this?
Did anyone ask Bill what he thought?
In terms of the transfer of money? No, I did not, just because it's an accounting, it's really an accounting, he's not losing personnel or changing in his department at all. It's really just the transfer of the funding and the accounting, so I relied on Tan Yarian to provide me with that.
Any others? Jamie, you're on.
Counselor Anist?
Yes.
Counselor Bedraco?
Yes.
Counselor W. No?
Yes.
Counselor Klett?
Yes.
Counselor Manke?
Yes.
Counselor Marakini?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Counselor Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor Zartarian?
Yes. That's approved, nine-zero. And finally, number 12, additional prior year PO closed to help offset capital improvement.
I'm going to have Ann explain this one as well, she was the one that found it for us. Yes, as we go on to one of the, our mid-year transfers for capital, as we were going through that, there was a PO on one of the projects that is closed that was still open for $4,000, so since we're closing that project and that PO is no longer needed, that's another $4,000 that we can put towards basically offsetting the capital request, and that will go towards the IT reserve.
Any counsel comment or question on that? Okay, Jamie?
Counselor Anist?
Yes.
Counselor Badrico?
Yes.
Counselor Delbuno?
Yes.
Counselor Klett?
Yes.
Counselor Manki?
Yes.
Counselor Marakini?
Yeah.
Counselor Nagel?
Yes.
Counselor Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor's Artarian?
Yes. Zero approving that one.
Mr. Mayor, I have two that I'd like to put up.
Going to ask if there are other adjustments to the budget? Go ahead.
Ready? Okay, so I'm going to need a little help from Anne on the account number. But I'm going to put, that's pretty much a wash, so I'm going to, I'll explain them first and then put them up separately. In this year's budget, our town attorney's account went up by 19.83%. And to give a historical background on this, to our town attorney, the account, what we've always budgeted for as many years recently as I can recall is $130,200, of which our labor attorney, I believe, has paid about $15,000 out of that account. So what has been added to the account this year would be under 8217 consultant, special contractor, for an additional $25,000 over and above the $130,000. As I said, that equates to a 19.83%. And in this account, in what I've heard council members sitting around the table describing this as such a difficult year, and the situation that we're facing is so grim, it's hard to understand why we would increase that account by 19.83%. In addition, we just gave out, I was not here for the vote, but we just gave out administrative raises. So I truly would like to see that that account reduced by $25,000. That would be my motion. I'd be looking for a second. The second part of it is, I would like to make a motion that we increase the library fund by $26,780, which would be essentially the amount of money that would be needed to add back the Sunday library hours. So I see this as a wash, and I don't have the account number for the library that would be needed. So my first motion, and I'm looking for a second, would be to reduce account number 8217 consultant and special contractors account by $25,000.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Counselor Anest, discussion.
It's funny that you bring this up, because I was actually asking this in our caucus on how this, and you or maybe Beth may know, how this is constructed. We have appointed a town attorney that has a...
It's paid.
I can't think of the word.
Not a retain, it's a flat fee.
It's not a retain, it's a flat fee. So a flat fee of, you're saying, $130,000?
It's $130,000, and of that, I believe, the labor attorney has paid 15, a flat fee of 15.
It's 0160. 160, or 1? 0160. 0160. I just want to get the page. And so when anything happens above and beyond, like say Attorney Palomino needs to be brought in, that doesn't come out of that money. He gets paid extra?
My...
Is my question.
It doesn't come out of the town attorney's fee, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Correct.
So they don't share it?
Well, I can tell, I can give you my thoughts about that.
Well, I guess my question is, is why one over the other? Why pay the extra if?
Yeah, that's exactly my point. If you have, you're paying a retainer of $130,000. I believe that we need better utilization of our town attorney.
Because I haven't seen, like, when you requested the special, I'm losing my brain, special counsel breakout, we've spent quite a bit of extra money for special counsel in the past, well, between '16 and up till now. It's like $100,000. So now, we're up to 230. I just, my question, my main question was, why does it work that way, I suppose? It's not necessarily a budget question, but...
I believe we need better utilization of our town attorney, that is my opinion.
I probably would agree with that.
I agree. I would like to use our town attorney more as well, I agree. And I would, I would look to Tanya and Anne to help me understand the $25,000 line item and what that entails. Is that the labor attorney isn't there in that $25,000 that Counselor Klett is referring to?
No, that's not just for the labor attorney, it's for any other special attorneys that, outside of using Benny Ancona or Brian G. Antonio's flat fee. So we've had costs in the past for the use of special attorneys for a variety of reasons.
When you say the past, do you mean this year or in other years as well?
Other years as well.
And where was it typically if it wasn't in this account?
What happens is, it gets charged to the town manager's contingency. And if we run out of money, then I have to find it, find the money elsewhere. And in fact, tonight, you'll be seeing, we'll be doing transfers to that fact. So just based on trend, we've been using more outside councils than, and I just want to make sure we have a correct accounting of it.
Then we should deduct the main attorney's account.
Right.
Somebody's got to get cheaper.
Or use.
Right.
There's money going in one direction, but too much by the seemings of things. But I'll support taking the $25,000 off for now.
I do want to add that sometimes there is a conflict of interest with the attorney. So that's why you have to get a special attorney or it's something very specialized that we need it for.
Or you would need...
$25,000 is...
I'm sorry?
I think $25,000 is, if we look at it in the past, it's, the whole $130,000 has been able to cover, you know, the labor retainer and the town attorney. And, you know, perhaps we could, we should be looking at why we were paying other attorneys versus using our, you know, Benny Ancona.
Counselor Anest?
I think going forward, you might have to review how we handle our town attorney and how the town attorney is used, and possibly going out to bid and getting the best deal. I will support Counselor Klett's reduction of $25,000.
Counselor Manki?
Just for clarification, so far this year, we spent $59,500.
No.
You're looking in the budget book?
That was 1516.
1516, so the, so last year, we spent that much?
Yes.
Or last fiscal year?
Last fiscal year.
Counselor Nagel?
So just to clarify some more, the funds that are in there, how often have we used them where we've had to go somewhere else? I may be asking you to repeat what you've answered before, but I just need a clarification. And given what, no offense to any attorney, but given what attorney fees happen to be, how quickly, if any, is left or what is there, might be used, might be used up if indeed we unfortunately would have to use outside attorneys?
Just looking on our system. So last year, 1516 was $59,500. And the year before that was 50, and the year before that was 32, and the year before that was $30,610. So...
And what's the amount that is in there that's the extra? I'm not looking back at the amount, and if this is a decrease of part of it?
Yeah, so this is a new item. So recognizing that in years past, we've had to find the money elsewhere. I just wanted to put it in the correct spot so that we don't run short. I know we're trying to keep the budget as lean as possible, but I don't want to get, I don't want to have it in the wrong account.
So we have historically spent money on special attorneys, we just haven't had a separate category for it?
Exactly. So I'm just trying to reflect the trend that we've had in past years.
Counselor Klett?
Again, I think it's a matter of the council doing a better job of making sure that the cases, unless it's a conflict, which is obviously, you know, a no-brainer, it's a, it's a keeping a better accounting on what's being covered by our town attorney and what is being fed to other attorneys.
Counselor Delbuno?
While I agree that there's room for improvement on that, I absolutely agree with you, and I think we do need to look at that moving forward. What I'm hearing is that this is not really an increase in dollars. This is just putting a line item where it should have been versus where it shouldn't have been, which is similar to what we did with another account where it looks like a large increase, where we shifted from, I want to say it was the radios or something, it was technology, where we shifted a line item from one account to another. So it looks like a decrease in one and a big increase in another. But what you're saying is this used to come out of contingency, and you just wanted it somewhere where it's accounted for, so that we can actually see what we're doing. And it will be reflected in the book next year as such. So we'll be able to see the previous year, next year, and we'll be able to see that trend a little bit easier than if it were taken out of contingency, essentially.
I think that's...
I don't have a problem with that, then, if that's just an accounting practice piece.
Counselor Klett?
Yeah, I think that's, that's one way to explain it. And another way to explain it is that perhaps we've been doling out attorney, you know, work to our non-attorney, non-town attorney who's getting a sizable contractual amount of money to do the work for the town.
Counselor Sarah?
I'm just going over an email that Tanya had sent back to us about the special counsel history and the large sum that Maureen was just talking about. I mean, if you, we knew about this, it should have been on here, so we had something to base this on? Or is all of that $72,000 coming out of the contingency?
It's coming out of the contingency.
Counselor Anest?
Lot to be coming out of contingency.
Counselor Anest?
Going back, this is where I'm saying, I think transfers need to be, come before the council, so we're not blindsided when it comes to budget, when monies are being transferred to pay these bills or any other bills. Like I said, we're approving line items, we're not approving the budget in the entirety. And I will be bringing this up at a later council meeting.
Counselor Klett? Go ahead, Jamie, on, yes, this is on...
Is there a second? There was a second, right?
Counselor Klett's motion.
Counselor Anest's second.
Yep.
Counselor Klett, would you restate the motion, please?
The question is that we reduce account number 8217 consultants and special contractors in, under the town attorney line item by $25,000.
Just writing it down for my... Okay, Jamie, if you would?
Counselor Anest?
Yes.
Counselor Badrico?
No.
Counselor Delbuno?
No.
Counselor Klett?
Yes.
Counselor Manki?
No.
Counselor Marakini?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
No.
Counselor Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor's Artarian?
No. Motion fails by a vote of five-four. Okay, your next...
Right.
...item is the library.
Right, I meant this to be a sort of a wash, but I certainly will try again this year. Is, I don't have the account number, but I'd like to see the library account increased by $26,780 for the purpose of opening up the Sunday hours, reinstating the Sunday hours.
Do you have the account number, Anne?
There's various account numbers, but you can use account 7118103. Part-time.
Second.
All right, we had the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Anest, discussion. Counselor Klett?
Again, I, you know, this is something I think that's a community-wide need versus a 19.83% for a town attorney's account and administrative raises and all the things that have happened. While we're saying things are so difficult, you know, I believe that this is a community-wide need. And I, and I, again, again this year, I'd like to ask that the council reconsider putting the Sunday hours back into the budget.
Great council discussion. Counselor Nagel?
I would be more receptive to this if indeed there was a wash, but there isn't a wash, and other departments are taking some cuts or being very lean. So I'm somewhat in a quandary as to where this amount of money could be found. It's not that I'm against Sundays, but I don't see how we can add that, even though they were taken away last year, and I do understand that. And was, didn't particularly, wasn't particularly happy about that happening. $28,000 a wash from somewhere else that's viable would be infinitely more acceptable to me than what we have right now.
Counselor Klett?
Well, there could have been a wash. You chose not to have a wash, so I'm still going to put the motion up.
If I may, I appreciate that, Counselor Klett.
Counselor Delbuno?
I guess I don't see it as a wash, because I'm hearing that the money was, would have been spent out of contingency anyway. So even if we had voted for that, it wouldn't have been a true wash, because that money would have still been an expenditure out of a different account. So, you know, I agree with Counselor Nagel on this.
I'd also note that a lot of library services are available online, too. I mean, I'm often checking things 10:30 at night when the library is closed. Counselor Anest?
Couple of things. We did find revenue in the telecommunications tax that Anne found, which is $35,000. I know you're using it to offset the other items, but there's money there, plus the other two. And, you know, I'm thinking of our students and our college students that use the library to go get to work done, that use the internet at the library, have quiet time. I think it's very important for our library to be open on Sundays. And we tried putting it back in last year, and it failed, so I will be supporting this.
Any other comment, Counselor Klett?
I'm just going to add to what Counselor Anest said. You know, I think it's, you know, nice to say that the library is available at 10:30 at night. But if you're a third or second grader, you didn't, there's no, there is no exchange for being able to go into the library. And I only know from my own personal experience as an adult learner, I spent many a Sunday working on my master's, sitting in the, in the library. So, you know, I, while I do appreciate online services and have certainly used them extensively myself, I really don't believe that you're going to find that's useful for a second or third grader who may want to go to the library on Sunday.
Any other council comment? Counselor Badrico?
Personally, in my heart of hearts, I hope that the first thing when the town gets more money and there's a little bit more of a wind fill, that Sunday hours are the first things to come back. But we agonized line by line by line over, I mean, 500 here, 1,000, trying to squeeze water out of a road over a rock. So as much as, in, you know, my heart, this is very important to me, I just don't think at this point I'd be able to support it.
Counselor Klett?
So I'm just going to add one more comment, and with no disrespect to our administrators sitting here, but a couple of weeks ago, you added, I believe it was over $100,000 in money for raises for administrators.
No, we didn't.
What was it, how much? We didn't add anything to this budget. This was, that was money that was already approved last year. An action. And, and yet, you can't open the library on Sunday. Just, that was based on figures from last year.
Any other council comment? Jamie?
Counselor Anest?
Yes.
Counselor Badrico?
No.
Counselor Delbuno?
No.
Counselor Klett?
Yes.
Counselor Manki?
No.
Counselor Marakini?
Yes.
Counselor Nagel?
No.
Counselor Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor's Artarian?
No. Motion fails, five-four. Any other council items or adjustments to the budget? Never an easy process. Thank you all for the work and energy you have put into this project. Next item, consideration of new business status update on the Alumni Road study. Our town planner is stepping forward.
Good evening. I believe the last time we presented an update on this project was late January. So since then, the number of things have been accomplished. Since then, the consultants have finished collecting traffic count data for all of the intersections on Alumni Road, I mean, on Cedar Street between Alumni and Old Farm East. This is to update the traffic counts that were done by the state many years ago. And these new traffic counts were necessary to support some of the improvements that the plan proposes. The other thing that was accomplished was, at the request of the Board of Ed, the consultants have explored ways to address the impact that the additional traffic on Alumni Road will have on the high school parking lot on Alumni Road if the gate is removed. The third thing that's been accomplished is, the consultants have finished a PowerPoint presentation that will be presented to the public. This presentation includes detailed description of the plans, contains data, as much data as anybody would care to hear. And the, finally, the public information meeting where this presentation will be made has tentatively been scheduled for May 31st. That sounds like a long way off, but that date was tentatively chosen partly because the council has its hands full with the budget. You've got the town hall renovation project. The date was picked to not conflict with any other board or commission meeting so that council members and other department or members of boards and commissions could attend this public information meeting. And that's it in a nutshell. If commissioners have any, or councilmen have any questions, I'll try to answer them without going into too much detail, because we don't want to get ahead of ourselves with the public information meeting.
Counselor Anest?
Is there any way that we can schedule this earlier than May 31st?
Well, like I said, it was, that tentative date was chosen because of all the other conflicts, but we can certainly go back and look at it and, and choose to hold it sooner if that's what the council and the consultation with the town manager feel is appropriate.
I just feel that you have the information, it's fresh in your minds, your presentation to you was fresh in your minds. You're going to make us wait another two months when the budget's going to be set on April 18th, and we can do it thereafter, or we can do it before. I would request that we look at different additional dates to hold this sooner.
Okay, we can revisit that, certainly.
I think the sooner the better.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, we all agree, it's just we didn't want to conflict with other things, but we can make it, we can make it sooner.
I would also suggest you make sure NCTV is available for whatever date it's finally scheduled for to broadcast it.
Definitely.
And tape it.
Okay, thank you.
Capital transfers.
That's me. It's convenient when you're doing this on budget night, I don't have to move my seat. Okay, so we're talking about the current year that we're in, fiscal year 1617, Okay, so we're talking about the current year that we're in, fiscal year 1617, and we're transferring money from our town council contingency, basically for areas of wages, the elderly tax relief, and for legal counsel. Before you was a, on that first page is a chart of, we had wage increases for the absentee employees, the administrators, and part-time for various departments, the town manager, finance, general services, and that totals 122,934. So again, that money was budgeted in special contingency, and what we're asking to do is to move it to the respective departments where the payroll will be charged. Also, that was for the wages, under finance, we're also looking for 3,844 for the elderly tax relief and also an accrued vacation payout that was made. Again, the town attorney account, we had additional funds are needed for outside attorneys in the amount of 72,420. Under personnel, we have additional funds are for, again, legal fees for labor matters and for the contract negotiations in the amount of $32,000. Our zoning board of appeals, putting out more legal notices for, so we'll need $550. And that can be covered through our contingency account.
Any questions for Ann, counsel Ann asked?
I have a question regarding the legal fees to labor matters and contract negotiations. So we had, out of the 130, 15,000 is allocated to that specific item?
I think that's for, it says retainer for, I think, just regular consultation, so if there's matters that go above and beyond that, we need that.
So...
So for his time...
Above the 15, there's an, there was an additional 32,202?
Yes.
And is that an, how is that, is it an hourly rate that's negotiated? How is that determined?
I believe so, yeah, it's an hourly rate. I don't know if you have any...
It is an hourly rate. I think it was contracted before I came on scene, I think.
But we have a new labor attorney.
We do have a new labor attorney.
Oh, that's right, he was appointed before, I'm sorry. Okay, so, so he draws, so unlike the town attorney, he draws down on his 15,000 first against his hourly rate, and then he bills for any additional. Is that how that works?
Standing, yes.
Okay, and the town attorney is a flat?
Correct.
One, whatever it is?
Right.
No matter if he does $80,000 worth of work, or if he does $150,000 worth of work?
Correct.
So it's not a true retainer, it's a flat fee?
Counselor Delbino.
Just for clarification, I want to make it clear, that's how it's always been done. Maybe not always, that's the wrong term, but historically, prior to this administration, it was done the same way with the labor attorney, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's not a change, thank you.
Counselor Clatt.
Is this more than just the labor, the labor attorney, or is it, does it include, like, I know we had, and the town attorney did not handle NVA, does that include this amount of money from the attorney that handled?
I think Palomino goes through here, doesn't he?
Right, so account 160, town attorney, is for, would be for Attorney Palomino or for Roe McGuigan that we also used for other specialty. 180 is for counsel, Attorney G. Antonio for personnel matters.
So I guess the question I would ask is, if we could have, I don't know, when I asked for the fees, the accounting of what we had spent, is how many of those projects were handled by outside attorneys, not including the labor, because that's a given specialty, but all of the others, how many of those were handled because there was a conflict of interest? Because that would really be what you would be looking to go to somebody else for, or any of those handled?
Counselor Clatt, would you move the microphone a little closer?
So were any of, any of this amount, you know, given to another attorney because of the conflict or not?
Well, off the top of my head, I would say part of it was a perceived conflict. I know it was a blight issue, and so I would refer you to that particular situation. The AMR contract is something new that was negotiated by, not by the town attorney, by outside counsel. As far as the labor attorney, we were in union negotiations far longer than I had anticipated, but that's why it's so high. There are other outside attorneys that I kind of inherited, and as I sit here, I can't tell you definitely what their role is, but I know they're outside of the scope of the attorneys we're now discussing, and those were part of the ones that I pulled back on and handed off to the town attorney.
In addition to what she's requesting, how many of the fees that were incurred because we didn't have someone who was specialized or, I don't want to say specialized, but the expertise, because some of these cases that we feed out to outside attorneys are for specialized matters that our town attorney might not have the expertise in, like the labor attorney, which is something different, but there were other, other issues. So I would like to know that as well.
I don't, I don't think I can answer it sitting here.
No, 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 I'm not asking for it tonight, just...
So tell me again, like, the ones that were ongoing before I came on board?
Yeah, and I know there was a reason why there was outside counsel handling it.
Okay, I know what you mean.
Could I request that we add two additional years prior to that, just so we can compare for trend?
Yeah, thank you.
Because I don't, I don't, maybe numbers may be a little different, but I don't think the purposes are necessarily different.
I agree, yeah.
Okay.
Nothing against our attorneys.
Yeah, I know, I wanted to say, I don't think this is a personal, personnel piece...
It's just that, we were just trying to see, because maybe there's a better way that we can approach this.
Well, I agree, I agree with you, which is one of the reasons that I diverted one of, one or two of the cases from the outside attorney back to the town attorney, when I had a better sense of what was going on. Some of these, as I say, have been ongoing for years, John Doe, that type of a situation. So we'll certainly look into those invoices and get back to you.
Counselor Clatt.
Even if they've been ongoing for years, I know in the past that there may be a reason that one town attorney needs to hand off, but when there's a change in town attorneys, things can go back to a new town attorney. So I think we need to, we need to really pay attention because this, it's a lot of money. You can't, we can't open the library on Sunday, but we can pay exorbitant amount of attorney's fees.
Counselor Delbino.
I just, I wanted to compliment you, Tanya, because I know you did pull back on a few cases when circumstances changed around the cases and you were able to see that that special counsel wasn't needed anymore. So I would say thank you, because I know you are starting to look at those things. If you weren't in the past, you definitely have been recently, so I appreciate that. And I, you know, I have, I want to just say, I feel like our town attorney himself is getting beat up, but he's done a phenomenal job for us so far, so I just want to make sure that we understand this isn't about the person, this is about the dollars and the figures and the position and, and how better to handle it moving forward. At least that's my perception of things.
Yeah, I would like to maybe take a different route on the town attorney.
Anything else on the transfers? We will see this at the next meeting, I assume?
Right.
Moving on, lease purchase financing for our department, apparatus.
Okay. I'll have to put my glasses on so I can read my note. Back in September, we acquired, we submitted, acquired a, from Pierce Manufacturing, the acquisition of a Velocity Custom Pumping Engine for the Fire Department, and we're going to be doing a lease purchase financing on that. So we went out for an RFP to get some Connecticut finance, competitive financing on those. We received 10 proposals, and the lowest one was from TD Equipment Finance with a rate of 1.84 percent. So that will also be on the agenda for next meeting to go over that.
Any questions or comments on the lease purchase RFP? This was for financing only. Okay, seeing none. We will see this at the next meeting, and we will move on.
Excuse me, Roy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to go back, just because you skipped a whole page of the transfers of capital projects, did you want to discuss that at all?
The closed capital?
The closed ones.
Oh, the capital projects. We want to go back and discuss that a little.
I can certainly help discuss that. Would you like me to discuss that? Sure. There's a list of, I'm recommending, is a, there are several capital projects that we are closing. The work has been completed and balances left on these, and what we're asking for you to take approval on is to take that money, there's a list that totals over, a little over $300,000, and to put them towards projects that we deferred in our CIP. I think we talked about this the night we did our, our CIP plan. So there's requests that departments made, that when we saw we had this other source of funding, we wanted to use this source of funding up first before we started using tax dollars. So we also had a couple of requests from the Fire Department. They had made the request, they have several projects that have balances, and they wanted to use that towards interior and exterior painting of Company 3 and for a generator at Company 5. There was also a Mill Pond Park renovation study that has a balance of 32,000. In talking with Bill DiMeo, he requested that go towards the renovation at Churchill Park, so...
Any questions on the capital projects component?
I think just the last one, the school bus replacement, the 10,000?
Correct. There's still an account, a school bus account, that's, so that will be going towards the Board of Ed's. There's a high school tennis court that has a balance of 10,734, so we try to keep it within the same department. So we'll be putting that towards their, they have an account that's existing right now for school buses, so they can help use that to defray their costs.
That's in addition to the, the new CIP account?
Would be going into that CIP, yes.
Counselor Delbino.
And these were all balances that were already reflected in the CIP, correct?
Correct.
We just haven't taken action on them at the table?
Right, you have to, right.
So these are all already in the CIP book? If you look in the, there's like different columns for each item, so these are all reflected in there already?
Yes, so we were, that's in the proposed book. So we're proposing it at that point, so now we're asking you to take action, either take action on it now, and that way when we adopt the budget, it'll be, it'll be all set.
Okay.
Counselor Nagel.
Just, I clarify a lot.
No kidding.
These things were taken, yes. Clearly over there. I may not be able to hear, but those items were originally on the CIP, several of them. These monies have been found, so they no longer needed to be on the CIP. They were taken out, they are now here and, and aren't on the CIP for this budget that we just launched.
Did you fill that, or do you want?
Yeah. Correct, so these are in CIP. They're, these are all different capital projects that the, there's balances available. The projects have finished, and there's still money left on them. And what we're going to be able to do is use those balances to defray upcoming CIP projects.
Okay. So like, if you look in the bus line item, that 10,000 through 734 was in the next column over, so the total was based on what we allocated plus the 10,740 that we're hoping to transfer into there? So these monies are just, while they were already there for other reasons, they're being reallocated to offset the costs that are coming up?
I'm a novice on the CIP issue. Do I get any credit for that?
No.
I didn't think so.
You got it now?
I get it, okay.
Questions on?
Thank you.
And the last couple of pages of your memo show where the departments are, okay, Caroline, which, where funds need to be transferred in?
Right. Yep.
Okay, we're back to the issue of the lease purchase.
No signs.
No, we did the lease already. Skip.
Signs.
Next one.
We did that. Oh, a digital sign and a memorandum of understanding. Mr. Minor is still here.
All right. As, as the council members all know, the, the town of Newington is exempt from the zoning regulations, and the, it came to the TPZ's awareness a few months ago that there was some thought to put a digital sign in front of the library. Planning and Zoning Commission felt that that was another digital sign, which they felt was not in keeping with, with their vision of Newington. And so the idea came up to, to possibly hopefully prevent this from happening in the future, and so the TPZ didn't have to be constantly vigilant in, on the area of digital signs. The thought was that there would be this, this memorandum of understanding between the council and TPZ. It's a, it's what I call a gentleman's agreement, it's not legally binding, but it's, it's an agreement in good faith between both parties. I, to be honest, I don't know whether the idea was floated with any of the council members before TPZ proposed it. Maybe that's what we're going to be talking about now, but that, that's the genesis of this, of this proposal.
I would only say that, like, the Board of Ed, I mean...
Mr. Marakini, excuse me, could you speak?
Oh, I can't hear you. Usually everybody can hear me, I'm surprised. Obviously, the, you know, there's been, we don't have any in town other than, I think the Board of Ed installed one a number of years ago. That was kind of before I was paying close attention, so I don't know how that went with feelings, but feelings were hurt. But, okay, so I guess Carol didn't like it, but, yeah, so, you know, I'm usually on the fence with us having to follow all the rules, but...
Counselor Anas, you were on TPZ that night, I believe.
Well, and I was on TPZ when we talked about the sign regulations, when we put in that only, we would only allow digital signs on the BBT, BBT, for, for gas, because we don't want to see these digital signs, we don't want to be a Las Vegas Strip, per se, or Route 6 in Bristol, sorry. We've had many, many discussions on TPZ regarding digital signs, and they're just not what we're portraying in our 2020 plan as still keeping that small village charm, and then you see these red, the red signs. I mean, the high school sign, it was a big, as some of you know from the Board of Ed, was, was not a pleasant discussion between the town planning and zoning and, and Board of Education coming before the town, the council. I mean, it does look better than having all those sandwich board signs in front of the high school. I do admit it, and it's a very tasteful sign. But I, I personally, and I, and I know, and I side with TPZ, I would, would like to see the council support this MOU. And maybe we could revisit it in a couple of years, or every council can revisit it because every council is different, but I would fully support and encourage the town council to support this.
Counselor Boudreco.
Again, I was, wasn't involved with the BOE sign, but I'm just wondering, should they be a party to this agreement, to this MOU as well? Because, I mean, you never know what's going, you know, coming down the pike and...
I don't have any opinion, strong opinion on that.
Well, I do know, because it's town property, it comes before the council, because didn't TPZ came before the council when they talked about the Board of Ed sign?
And the Board of Ed probably said, it's our property, we'll do what we want?
Yeah, I don't think it could hurt.
Yeah, and I agree, I think that's, that might be a good idea, to make them have them be a party.
I do like the idea of putting some kind of a timeframe or time to revisit it. I think there are some MOUs on the record that, you know, as climate changes, economic climate, and even just the philosophies, you know, from one decade to the next, they change. We have some MOUs that are very longstanding, so I think it makes sense to add a stipulation in there. I would be looking around the table to see what everybody thinks. I'm inclined to say each council, so each two years, but I'm curious what everybody else thinks.
I don't know if that would be cumbersome.
You're talking for every MOU that comes up, just, or just this one?
Well, we're just speaking to this one at this point.
I have a, have a concern about tying the hands of future councils or TPZs. I've never, ever been one to forget that, you know, that a new council comes in, or a new TPZ, and I think, you know, the thing is here, we have to remember too, is that we're elected, our TPZ members are not, they're appointed officials of both parties. And so it is, to me, I, I have a little concern that this reflects... And so it is, to me, I have a little concern that this reflects the, the thought process of the present TPZ. No?
No, this has been, the discussions on digital signs have gone back to 2011, 2011. So that was, that was previous. I mean, you're talking six years, this, this concept of not having digital signs in the town has been discussed.
I mean, I, I guess I just, I have some concerns that, and I agree with Beth, if this were to be put into place, that it shouldn't be put into place with, you know, for any longer than the term of the council, and then should be renewed. It's not, we don't know what's going to happen. To say, keep the, keep the New England charm, I mean, come on, look at the busway, how much New England charm.
I get it. We're talking about the Town Center District. No, and I don't have a problem doing it, like having it revisited every December, every December of the odd year.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay. Any other comments, questions on this? Thought we move on?
Could I ask for a little more discussion on the idea of the Board of Ed? Was that the consensus of the council? You'd like the Board of Ed to be a co-signing sponsor to this?
Certainly makes sense to reach out for that.
Why would the Board of Ed co-sign it?
Because they, they're the ones, who, I think, wouldn't they be grandfathered?
Does anybody remember who authorized?
Yeah, the council, I believe, wasn't it?
Right, but the, I don't have it in front of me, but the motion that the council adopted some 20 years ago, whatever, where they exempted themselves, the way it's worded, I don't have it in front of me, but I think the way it's worded, a case could be made that the Board of Ed could do it, could also do it, because that is the town of Newington. It didn't, I don't think it says the town council is exempt, I think it says town property is exempt, so it probably would be a good idea to consider, to consider including the Board of Ed in this agreement.
But who would authorize, I wonder who authorized the installation of that sign? I don't remember. The town manager.
Mm-hmm. I believe so.
It was the town manager.
One sign.
So it never even came before the council. I think TPZ then went before the council to complain.
2009.
Right, to, to make a, yeah, that's 2009?
Yes, okay, right.
What were the deductions of TPZ?
Right, it was 1970 that the.
Right, but 2009 is when the sign went up.
Right.
But as to who approved.
It says that in 2009, the council authorized the place.
But I'm pretty sure it was the manager.
Well, that might, okay, that might be my poor wordsmithing, although I spent a lot of time on that. Make sure all the dates are right, but.
I mean, can we check to make sure it was, just to make it a little bit more accurate? But I still think it's a good idea for the Board of Ed to sign off on it, too.
I don't think we can make them sign off on it.
You can't.
No, we can ask them.
No, but you can ask them.
We can approach them with the idea of working together on it.
I would wait till after tonight, after.
Thank you.
I would give it two nights, two weeks. I'm guessing they're not going to sign.
Well, I mean, you have, I mean, you have to come back to us anyhow with seeing who did approve the sign in 2009. And then are you going to ask TPZ if they would also, would like us to request the Board of Ed to sign off on it?
Yes, I can do that. Of course, it wasn't a Board of Ed sign that initiated this.
No, no, no.
This one, it was a, you know, a strictly town function, so.
No, I know, but how about the digital sign?
But I can certainly go back to them and talk to, and ask the TPZ if they have any problem with it being expanded to include the Board of Ed. Yes.
We're not asking them to take their sign down, correct?
No, no.
No, 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 no.
That'd be hysterical.
Not at this point.
I don't think so.
Okay, I will do that. That is.
Anything else on the MOU with TPZ? If not, we move on to the Steve Grant application.
Okay, yes, that's, I could get up, but I don't, all right. I believe a copy of the, of the application is in your package. As the, as the council recalls, this was a project that was funded with a, with a grant a couple of years ago. It turned out half a million dollars doesn't go as far as it used to. And the original grant literally went only half as far as we, as we had expected. I'm pretty confident that this additional 500,000 that we're proposing to ask for will be enough for this part of the project, because we're basing this estimate, or this grant, on the unit costs that the consultant has given us for the, what I'll call the current project. So we're pretty confident that these are, that these numbers will, will hold up if the grant is approved.
Counselor comment, question? Counselor Padre.
From, you know, sitting on the current streetscape, you know, Counselor Anis and I, it, it, once it's completed, we hope it'll be, you know, a beautiful, a very nice gateway into Newington, but if it just, if it just stops at Marcus Square, it's going to be like a visual jolt. You know, you're, you're eyeing down, you're driving down the road, and then all of a sudden, it's a barren wasteland from a beautiful paradise. And also extending it to include, you know, the Best Market Plaza, Northwood Plaza, it, it's going to tie, I think visually, tie the center together in a nicer bundle, should we say, because it, it does kind of seem like there's a division between Ashwell Downtown and the Northwood Plaza, when it really should be one, you know, commerce area, so I would support this.
Right, but to be completely honest, what we're proposing will only really go as far as Lowry Place and a little bit further south. It won't make the corner, as I hoped when I first started working on this.
But it's, it's, it's better visually when you're turning on to, to see that.
This is just an application for the, for the funds, right? Do we know what the, what the probability of getting the funds is?
Every, every cycle is different. It depends on what the competition is. I remember when we didn't get a grant one time, I wondered if it was because there wasn't a local match, and there's no local match in this one, so I went back and did some research. Actually, I didn't see any pattern between towns that did have a local match and were successful, and there are towns that didn't. I think it's just the, the strength of the project itself is what will determine whether a town gets chosen or not.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, and I'll stay here for the next item, in case I have any questions on the next one.
It's Fair Housing Month.
You do this every year, it's just, every year by law, you're required to reaffirm your commitment to fair housing.
There a legal mandate that we do that?
Yes, yes, there's a legal mandate, and it's reiterated in various grants that we apply for. We're committed under those grants to reaffirm our commitment to fair housing and affirmative action.
So that's one we will pack on at the next meeting as well.
Thank you.
Anything else while the town planners are here?
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thanks, Craig.
Goodnight.
Resignations and appointments. Counselor Anis, you have.
We have a resignation, and we have three appointments that were sitting on the table in front of you tonight. Let me go? Okay. Be it resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby accepts the resignation of Kenneth St. Ag as a member of the Economic Development Commission in accordance with the communication dated March 20, 2017.
Second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Sarah. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nine, zero. Do you have a replacement to appoint?
No, we do not have a, no, we do not have a replacement for him, but I have three appointments.
Okay.
Do you want me to do them all together or individually?
All together.
All together. Be it resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby makes the following appointments. Robert, Newington Housing Authority, Robert Kunnahan, 104 Northwood Road, Party D, term immediate to 11:30, 2021, replacing self. It's a reappointment. Employee Insurance and Pension Benefits Committee, Specialist John Slazarsky, 40 Grandview Drive, Party D, term immediate to 6:30, 2018, replaces self. That's also a reappointment. Standing Insurance Committee, John Slazarsky, 40 Grandview Drive, Party D, term immediate to 6:30, 2018, replaces self. That is also a reappointment.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Counselor Sarah, any discussion? Counselor Padre.
I'd just like to say I'm glad Mr. Slazarsky is agreeing to be reappointed to those committees. He's, brings a lot of knowledge to the table.
Any further discussion? Okay, we've had the motion and the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, nine, zero. Next item, minutes of previous meetings, you're going to get a motion to approve the minutes of the.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Mankey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Nagel. Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes are accepted. Written or oral communications, et cetera, et cetera.
I do not, thank you.
Moving right along. Counsel liaison and committee reports, Counselor Nagel.
Three minutes.
I have them listed.
I went to the recent Capital Region Council of Governments. One of the topics was state, region-wise water survey, which is available through CROG. The, CROG has done a, funded a flyover topically of all the areas of the state within its district. I understand it's one of the most detailed ones in the state in terms of view and whatever, and the town manager can get one. I can give her the gentleman's name, which may help us in a variety of different ways for various different projects. Recently, CROG sponsored Health District's Ebola Exercise. Basically, for us, it's coordinating different health services in the region in terms of what to do in case of emergency, and what problems exist, and how to correct them. They also discussed transportation, Fast Track. CROG, as well as other organizations, have done comprehensive summaries and surveys of Fast Track. And if you wish to look at it, I have one, I'm sure the town manager has one, you may do that to, for a good man, or whatever. And there was a discussion among all those there concerning the state budget, most particularly about the whole idea of putting the onus on towns and boards of Eds, part of the teachers' pensions, which is kind of, probably has changed since then, but is, is a topic of grave concern, as well as just the, the state budget and how it affects all of us. That's it for that. Town Hall Reno has met two times since last we formally met, and it's got a diagram of the size of what might be the town hall, and we're tweaking and talking and changing and making certain it fits into that 25 million amount that the town had, the council has said that they have to spend. Mr. Maricini, do you have something to add?
As close to 25 million as we possibly can get. Other than that, no, they've been working really hard. Tom Arcary, the, the lead architect for Quinzenberry Arcaryford, that's working with us, and Downs Construction. Between last week and this week, we're starting to start putting some numbers to the schematic that we have. They've been working a lot together even before that, because there was, you know, architects tend to think in terms of the space you use, and Downs being the construction manager, which is why we wanted to have one, thinks of the whole building. So there was some discrepancies the first time out, which while I was still on vacation, but on square footage. So they worked those out together, and we're at a little over, was it 72,000 or 73,000 square feet combined?
Seventy-three, I think.
Seventy-three, yeah, thank you. Which is good. So that leads all of us to believe how large this building is compared to what we actually probably need. We're squeezing it to try to fit the budget as best we can, and I think it's going really well. It's been, it's been pretty quick. I mean, we're meeting weekly, so, with phone calls in between. So we're working hard. That's it.
Any other liaison, Counselor Mankey?
I attended the Youth Adult Council hoopla basketball game last, last Friday. I believe it was success. I spent most of my time serving pizza.
Yes, because I wasn't there.
I know, that's how, I usually do the, I usually do the door, and I had to do the pizza, which, it's hard when you only have one glove on and a cutter, and it was getting slippery, and I was, but I think it was a good success. A lot of kids participated, a lot of, a lot of public was there. I would just want to thank all the volunteers, the people from Human Services and the high school that helped out to make that event happen. The money that is raised goes to scholarships for Newington High School seniors, so somewhere down, next couple of months, we'll be awarding three scholarships, so hopefully to Newington High School seniors.
Anything else, Counselor?
I forgot to mention, and I don't, I'm confused on our meeting schedule here, because I thought this was a regular meeting, but it's really not, right? It's next week. This is the fourth, this is the fourth Tuesday? All right, anyway, the Fireman's Ball, I don't think we discussed that. We were all there, there's pictures to prove it. Hopefully, some of those don't get out anywhere, but, no, it was a great time. They, I think they had 250 or 60 people attend. I had a blast, obviously, most of you know. I think we all had a blast. We were, you know, dinner, dancing, and it was a good time, and they showed a lot of support and recognition for some past firefighters, retired firefighters, so it was excellent. So a lot of cool upcoming events for their 100-year anniversary, which leads me to, I saw on Facebook, they have one going for apparel.
Yes.
I don't know the website off the top of my head, but if everybody wants to check that out, it's, it's a weird, you know, because it's a link, so it's a weird site, but worth the check out, some cool stuff on there, so I'll probably spend more money than, than anybody wants me to.
It's all for good cause.
But check that out and support your firemen.
I don't officially have a liaison report, but Counselor Anis had a great idea about the apparel, if you.
Oh, I suggested that maybe the council all buys a shirt, kind of like, none of you just have to match, and then when they have their 100th anniversary parade, we definitely all wear the shirt in the parade.
Absolutely.
And also wear them around town, but I think it's a nice way to support the fire department.
Sounds neat.
So we'll send out the link.
Yeah, send it out.
And we can decide what we want, what we want to get.
Thank you.
What we want to order.
Any other liaison reports? So it's time for public participation again. Please come forward, take your name and address. At least leave your remarks to three minutes. And if you're watching on NCTV, the number again, 860-665-8736.
Rose Lyons, 46 Elton Drive. First and foremost, I knew for sure that the education budget would be cut. I hope that this year it's not as contentious between this body and the Board of Ed as it was last year. I'd like to ask if you're going to also be only allowing registered voters and taxpayers to participate during public participation? You don't have to answer now. Veterans Landing is a project for assisted living for veterans up at the Veterans Hospital. I'm wondering if anybody's heard anything about that, because that, too, will impact Alumni Road. Advice for social or Human Services and the Senior Center. Don't back down as easily as you do, because you don't get it back. Once it's gone, it's like a tree. And the library, once you give in, it's gone forever. Seeing that no one answered my question about the CIP during the public particip, or the remarks by counselors on public participation, I'm going to, after the meeting, ask Counselor Clutt if she will tell me to either keep quiet or keep asking questions.
Keep asking questions.
Thank you. As for the sign, the digital sign at the high school, I was here for that little confrontation between TPZ, and I think there's an administrative letter 35 that may have come into play, it may not. It does tell you exactly what kind of signs can be put on town property. I had asked that the EV signs be taken off of the brand-new signs that Counselor Maricini and Rose Lyons fought to get for a long time, but I gave up TPZ for Lent, so I can't ask them the questions, so.
You can ask us to ask them.
Please.
It's almost over.
Could you please? And as far as cutting monies for conferences and meetings, that's all fine and good. It looks like it's nickel and diming to me, because I've been at boards and commissions where. where they've been told that only three or four of the members of the Board of Commission can attend a seminar or something like that, because they don't have the money. And that's not right, in my opinion. They're volunteers. That should be fully funded. Maybe people that are employees can be said...be told, no, you can't go to this one. But I sure would hope that anybody that's on a Board of Commission doesn't get told that they can't go to training because the budget's been cut. Last but not least, Facebook is starting to talk again about the sheets going up on the fences. And I know TPZ has no control over it, because it's town property. But please, people, don't put up the signs before April 1st. And if you can put them up a month before graduation and take them down a couple of weeks...
April 1st, April 1st.
June 1st, huh?
And June 30th.
Pardon me?
You said April 1st.
No, I said they were talking. I said, don't put them up on April 1st, like they've been... Everybody's been saying, get them up there fast. There's no rules or regulations. They're not governed by any ordinances, but common courtesy. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Lady Kenny, 53 Crestview Drive. Please indulge me, my notes are arrows and parentheses and little bubbles and all that sort of stuff. I just would like to say that, in reference to the Board of Ed, I'm a little on slippery ground when I find discrepancies in what you say they have and what they say they have and this type of thing. All I know is that there were many years... There was a chart sent out several years ago of many years where the budget was so lean, people were chewing on bones for the Board of Ed. And eventually, the budgets had to reflect that the piper had to be paid. They had to make up for the years when programs and equipment and such like that were not replenished. So I just...the piper will have to be paid, if not this year, not even next year, because I don't see next year being any better than this. But it will have to be paid for our children's sake. The other thing I have a question about is our lawyer. And again, it's, you're right, it's not a personal thing. It's just something I don't understand. I would just be curious, without compromising privacy, how this $130,000 is parceled out? Is it by the hour? Is it by the thing? Is it, you know, on January 1st, somebody gets a check... Or, sorry, July 1st, somebody gets a check for $130,000, and that's it? I find it interesting, even though I do know that money is allocated in various...in different ways, that it was not a problem of that $25,000 for the extra lawyer, but we couldn't find $5,000 for Human Services to hire a consult when they need it for somebody that comes in with a significant problem. We were told when Victory Garden was being proposed, there was a woman, we were up in the Helen Nelson Room. She stood in the far left-hand corner, because I was there. And she said there would be absolutely no impact on the town, that there would be minimal children there, that anything...there would be nothing. It would be all handled in that area. And that is not what's happened. And our Human Services have had to take on extra, and they're, I'm sure, very happy to do so. And people need help. But $5,000, if they need that, it's hard for me to see why it can't somehow be found. Maybe what we could do is put the library... You know, the money that I donate to the library for overdue books, maybe we could form a jar, and we could put money in that for them. The other thing, too, is that while I appreciate your kindness, Maureen, in wanting to allow other councils have a say about the signage and such like that, digital signage, in my unsolicited opinion, ugly is ugly. I don't care what year you're talking about, and I don't care who's sitting where. It's ugly, and I don't want to feel like I'm living in a pinball machine. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not counsel comments? Counsel Padreco?
I didn't say this during the Liaison and Committee, because it was something else. But I did go to a conference about regional cooperation for In-N-Out Connecticut. And it was a statewide conference where there were mayors and first selectmen from communities, as well as state officials, including Brendan Sharkey, who was a former Speaker of the House. Luke Bronin was there. And just some things for us to consider. There are...there is, just like you're working with Weathersfield and some of our surrounding communities, there is a lot of things going on in terms of regional sharing. But to be successful, the communities need to be compatible. It has to be voluntary. And there has to be local evaluation of effectiveness. And this was coming from the smaller communities who were already doing it in their own way. But the people who are, like the mayors of the bigger communities, as well as, you know, former Speaker Brendan Sharkey are talking on a different level. And they're saying, first of all, they're not going to be using the term regionalism anymore. It's going to be service sharing. So, but, you know, a rose is a rose is a rose. I mean, you know...
Change the next day.
Whatever. But they're talking...the local things are nice, but they're not, is what necessary to move us forward in their opinion, in, you know, some of the think-takes opinion. And they really are talking, at least Bronin and Sharkey, are seriously calling for 9/11 call center consolidation. They're seriously talking about fire departments. They're seriously talking about police departments and public works. So my...I guess my message is, is that I think our state representatives, as well as our, you know, locally elected officials need to keep an eye or an ear to the ground, an eye to the sky, whatever, about some of these things that might be coming down, and to make sure that there is some kind of control for where we want to share services.
Counsel Nagel?
It appears that we started with Health Districts in the state wanting to do something with them, and now it's fanning out to other areas. Counselor Maricini mentioned a while ago about the wonderful Fireman's Ball that we all enjoyed. There were other things we did that we enjoyed and showed great things in the community. Would you believe many of us were part of the St. Patrick's Parade in Hartford, which was really cold, but was an exciting day and was a day that commend the fire department and the other services, the police department, for coming out and marching in the cold with us. Also, we recently, well, a few weeks ago, attended the EMS Annual Awards Event. And most of us were there, and I'm sure we appreciated being invited to that as well. And more recently, last Sunday, we...many of us attended the renovation festivities at the Emmanuel Baptist Church. And I kept on thinking, well, did they invite us because it's about renovation? And here we have renovation here. Is that... But it was a very pleasant experience and enlightening experience. And they should be proud of what they have done. All these events are really positive things, and positive things that we, as a council, are able to share.
Anything else, Counsel Delburo?
Just wanted to point out, I think earlier, we should have tallied things up at the end of our discussion. So we did not get from Ann the bottom dollar figure of the adjustments we made to the budget, as well as the proposed tentative mil rate and the tentative percent increase to the budget. So, Tanya, if you could get that from her in the morning,